Good morning, everybody. I would like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting for March 28th, 2023, and welcome council, administration, and residents zooming in. I would like to begin by acknowledging that Jasper National Park and the municipality of Jasper are on treaty six and eight territory, territories as well as Maiti Region four. This land is the traditional territory, eating ground, gathering place, traveling route, and home for the Deneza, Nehewak, Anishinaabe, Secwetmik, Stoney Dakota, and Maiti. Council, you have the agenda in front of you. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Mayor Ireland.
I would propose that agenda item seven point five be deleted from the agenda for today's meeting and put forward to the next regular committee meeting next week. I say that because I am conflicted on that matter and will have to remove myself, at which time we will lose quorum, and nobody will be able to deal with it in any event. So if they could, if they could come off today's agenda and go to next week, that would be my motion for one change to today's agenda.
Thank you very much, Mayor Ireland. I would also propose a change, although someone else will make the motion. There is another E O E P Corps Selected Education Official Program in April, runs four weeks every Wednesday, Zoom. Counselor Demoto would like to attend as well as myself, and I'm not sure if anybody else wanted to. Maybe we could add seven point five, a new seven point five. If I can have a counselor or mayor, I would like to make that motion.
I'm happy to do that.
Thank you very much. And now I would be looking for approval of the agenda as amended. We're going to vote on that amendment first. Counsel, the amendments are in, I can just call for a vote, is that right? Awesome. Everyone knows the amendments, all in favor. And that is moved forward. We now have an amended agenda in front of us, so I have a counselor willing to take a motion to approve the agenda. Counselor Kelly Harambe, all in favor, and the agenda is approved. Moving forward, you have the minutes from the March 14th Committee of the Whole. Is there any business arising from these minutes? I see no hands. Do you see a hand, Mayor Ireland?
Thank you, Chair. I just note motion number 10523, top of the second page, I think. It is simply a motion with respect to the business plan for the Jasper Community Housing Corporation. And I recall that last meeting, I inquired whether steps could be taken concurrently to make sure that we're in a position as soon as possible to move forward with any changes to the structure of the community housing corporation. In the event other money might land in our laps. And money did land in our laps last week. And I I just raise it now as business arising, just to turn our attention to the fact that the sooner we can get that business plan before it's approved, the sooner we can move on to restructuring the Jasper Community Housing Corporation, and the sooner we can make use of funds which have been allotted to us. And I think it's critical that we move with a degree of haste on all this. So just keep that in mind that we put it forward till June. I'll speak to it again, I think, when we look at the motion action list and see whether we can accelerate.
Thank you very much, Mayor Ireland. With a counselor or mayor willing to make a motion to approve these minutes. Mayor Ireland? Oh, amended. Only with approved, perfect. Okay, moving on to agenda item five, delegations. I believe our delegators are going to be a bit late, so we will jump back to agenda item five when they appear. Moving on to agenda item six, correspondence. Anybody need to speak to this correspondence from Jeremy Nixon?
Thank you, Chair. I'm happy to see the letter was unfortunately delayed in its arrival. And it would have been nice to have received a letter prior to the announcement a week ago tomorrow that caught us a bit by surprise. But it is still excellent news for the community as we see its approval of up to six and a half million dollars for the Jasper Canopability Housing project, and this is thanks to considerable work by our own administration and our C A who put together the application package that was submitted in January of this year, and we hadn't anticipated a response until actually April of this year. So it came early but very welcome news. And although, in fairness, it is funding provided under a provincial program, there is federal money included in that. And so it's important to recognize now that there are three levels of government lined up to promote affordable housing in our community, which includes, of course, five hundred, pardon me, five million dollar investment by the municipality, which is recorded in our 2023 budget. So all very good news, and I thank the Minister, Minister Nixon, for recognizing, recognizing the needs of our small community in the overall scheme of things. One of, I think, eleven projects that were funded across the province.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. New a counselor wants to speak to this. Counselor Kelly Harambe.
I'd also like to thank Mayor Ireland and administration. It's very exciting work in a day. I'm so proud to help, you know, council ten years of affordable housing. And, you know, just to see it moving is so exciting.
Thank you, Counselor Kelly Harambe. I've been very excited, and when I first saw the number, I didn't think it was six point five million dollars. It was six hundred and two dozen dollars. I was very, very excited about the rest of it. So thank you very much. For that, okay, awesome, we're going to move on to seven new business. We probably should receive that information, the letter, or is it just? We should, okay. Counselor Kelleraney will take that motion to receive.
The committee received the correspondence from the Minister of Senior Community and Social Services, Jeremy Nixon, for information.
I'll call the question on paper, and that is carried. New business, seven point one Alberta Trade Immigration and Multiculturalism Project Update. I believe Manager Del is here to present to us.
Can you guys hear me? Uh huh, okay. Good morning, Deputy Mayor Hall and Council. Between April 1st, 2021, and March 31st, 2023, the municipality Jasper received funding from Alberta Trade Immigration and Multiculturalism to undertake a two-year project. The goal of the project was to support newcomer integration here in Jasper. We spent the last two years rewriting and redesigning our municipal website, which was launched first in June of 2022. On that website, we also added a community calendar. We as well wrote and developed a printable community guide. We also spoke with just over 100 individuals from 15 different local employers and 25 different local organizations to show them the new tools and to gather feedback. Their input over the past nine months since the website launch has helped us fine tune what you see here today. The community development team has had two additional colleagues over the past year, thanks to this grant funding, whose dedication brought this project together. Huge credit to my colleagues Melissa Day and former colleague Lindsay Gartner for their work on the website and calendar, as well as the guide. And also to our municipal communication specialist Rowan for her keen eye and time on the community guide. So you've read the report in front of you, and I invited Melissa here today on Zoom to share her screen and just show us a quick snapshot of the new areas of the website specifically to newcomers. Melissa?
Thank you for having me. I'm just, I'll share my screen. Yeah, so here we are in the new to Jasper section of our municipal website. And what we've done here is we've really tried to make this a hub of information where if you are new to town, whether that is from overseas or from Ontario, that when you come, there's one central place to find location, sorry, to find information. And so within this new to Jasper page, we've got a whole lot of information. So there's information and resources. If we jump in here, and this is really like just a hub of information, so housing, everyday basics, employment, education and training, language, healthcare, banking, and documents. Jumping into everyday basics. And in here, this is kind of like the first port of arrival. What do you need when you first arrive in Jasper? What, when you're a newcomer, what are the things that you're looking for and what do you need? So anything that you can imagine thinking of needing when you first arrive, such laundry services. Where do you get a towel or homeware products? What do you do if you have pets and animals? Where do you find your mail? What do you do with your garbage? We don't have, there's lots of unique elements of living in Jasper that are different from any other community in Canada, let alone other places in the world. And so we've really tried to put thought into how you might think about navigating and what you might need when you really first arrive here, taking into account a lot of newcomer experiences. And so that's kind of the, some of the information that you can find in here. Hopefully, I'm not scrolling too quickly for you. Really do encourage that you spend 10 minutes of time just having a look through here so that you know what kind of information we have available. Under healthcare, we have information on how you get our better health and what kind of things that covers, what your options are when you come here. We have mental health services, so we understand that a lot of people can struggle when you're in a small community, and when something is new, can be overwhelming. And there's a lot of different factors around that. And then just within, so this is within information and resources. If I go into see here into Discover Jasper, this is information just about our community. We've got a town map of downtown, which highlights essential services and the service providers, banks, pharmacies, the hospital, the schools. The kind of really essential key information that's in a form that's very easy to follow, really utilitarian, and just very practical to use. Some information about what you might want to wear in winter. So not just, we've tried to think about, not just kind of the very basic things that you need, but how you can enjoy living here too, and what that looks like, and presenting it in a way that is accessible and easy to access for all people. I I don't want to take up too much time, I know there's more things to go in here, but there's a whole lot of things in here, there's a cultural calendar, there's a section on employer resources that really helps employers navigate what needs and how they can better support the newcomers that we have just in our everyday, day-to-day worlds. There's like the section here, settlement services, newcomer network, local immigration partnership. These are the local service providers that we have access to in our community specifically for newcomers. And that's just a very, very fast and brief overview of the kind of the the hub of information that we've put into this section of the website through this grant over the last two years. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Melissa, that was super helpful, and Melissa's own experience as a newcomer to Canada herself lent so much strength to this process. Thanks for that little snapshot. So normally Melissa would spend an hour with groups going through all this information, looking for things that we could add, things that we could change, and then we would go back as a team and make those changes together. And so over the last nine months, it's resulted in a lot of improvements and slight changes to the content to just best serve the newcomers. So you might be wondering how we come up with the ideas for these projects in the first place, and that's a valid question. Like, how did we decide that we could overhaul the website, or that we could create a calendar, or that a printed community guide might help? That's where another group that we work with really comes into play. The Jasper Local Immigration Partnership, as well as the Newcomer Network. Those groups, supporting those groups and bringing them together is funded by the Government of Canada, specifically Immigration, Refugees, and Citizenship Canada. The LIP is a group of organizations working together to improve settlement experiences for newcomers here in Jasper. And the Newcomer Network is just what it sounds like. It's a place for newcomers themselves to connect, meet each other, get connected to community life, and learn about the services and supports we have here. So both of these groups are instrumental for us in community development and engaging and continuously consulting with to make sure that the programs and services and initiatives that we seek to pursue are really well aligned with those changing needs of the people they're supposed to be serving. Once the concepts are developed with input from these groups, of course, our most important lens, we put everything through courses, our municipal lens as well. So what's within our capacity, our authority, our scope, our budget? Does this need to go to council, can administration, can senior leadership team make the decision? So in October, together with the input from the Newcomer Network, the Local Immigration Partnership, we applied for two more years of funding, and we're excited to tell you that our application was successful, and we're in the process of signing an agreement for two more years of work. Here's what we're going to be working on. Research on newcomer contributions to the workforce, a toolkit for employers, a short film series showcasing newcomer story. And I think all of those items together really build upon the success of the past two-year project. And really, it's going to be more fun tools that will really enhance our website as a great space for newcomers when they first arrive. We're continuously inspired by the newcomers that we hear from, from the Newcomer Network, and we would like to share just a snippet of that inspiration here with you today. Leanne Palchey, part of her role is to work with the Newcomer Network, and she's here to share a short excerpt from a film that she's been working on with Newcomer Network members. Leanne?
Good morning. I am going to present to you this movie that we are working on. Just give me one moment to share my screen with you. Okay. And I'll just check if everybody can see my screen. Okay?
The reason I am here today is because of that cultural night. And it was one of the most beautiful celebrations, to be honest, I have attended in a while, not just here, but even in Toronto. It was absolutely beautiful to see a melting pot right there in the activity center. Flags from all the countries, I found the flag of my country, which was really cute. People dressed up in their traditional outfits. I personally wore a traditional shirt as well.
I think it's one of the greatest amazing things that the communities do right here. So basically, when you come over to Jasper, the community network is created here for us to start our life smoother and easier.
In my personal experience, I think the most difficult part of being a newcomer to Canada, it is not knowing where to start, what you should process first, and how to do it.
Housing in Jasper is one of the most challenging things that newcomers face. Being away from my family and living a place where I only know few people is one of the challenges I faced when I came to Canada. However, Jasper is a beautiful place and has a great community as well.
Jasper is a very tight-knit community. They're very accepting and supportive, very welcoming. So I think if we just continue with what we're doing, you know, being accepting without any bias regarding.
So welcoming and beautiful.
People here are so friendly. So we got supported by the community, by the people. We build and we connect with everybody.
We're so happy to be here in Jasper. We love all the people, and they will always go above and beyond to make you feel welcome.
Thanks so much, Leanne. It looks amazing, and thank you to everyone in the video and from the Newcomer Network for helping to create this little excerpt for us. And a very special thanks to our newcomer volunteer film editor Monica Rodriguez, who's helped so much. We're so excited to produce more films like this over the next two years that showcase newcomer stories and the settlement journeys that they've experienced in Jasper. So I think you can see from the film what kind of input we get from the Newcomer Network and the Local Immigration Partnership, and how that really shapes the work that we do in community development. And last but not least, we'd like to leave you, council, with the first copies of Jasper's first printed community guide. We learned so much about plain language and design producing this guide using plain language and design principles. Is it, is what makes this guide easy to read and easy to understand? You want to pass it over? Sure. Thank you. Thank you for your time today and for your support. This project and the one we will undertake over the next two years are serving to advance council's commitment to equitable policy and operations that truly allow all citizens to fully participate in community life, directly tied to council strategic priorities specifically to embrace our growing diversity and to leverage and create opportunities for greater inclusion. Thank you, I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dell, and thank you to Melissa, she's still there, and Leanne. This is absolutely wonderful. Any comments or questions from council? Counselor Laxer?
I just, I wanted to say congratulations, and that I think there's an expression that the gift from good hard work is more good hard work, and that I really commend the fact of what an amazing job you did in that first, in that first two-year period, and which the funders then really excited to fund for the second work. So just begin of great appreciation, and it's really exciting to see the Newcomer Network and the Local Immigration Partnership flourishing and providing important services to our community. Thank you.
Counselor Kelly Harambe.
I also want to congratulate you and all your team. And as a newcomer myself back many years ago, I think to have these programs in place for newcomers is so important. And, you know, every day we get newcomers working for all of us new employers, and to have the resources with you guys and settlement services to help our own workers now is just so beneficial to the employers of Jasper. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Mayor Chair. I'd like to express my thanks to you, Ms. Dell, and to the rest of the team. I am particularly pleased to see this document, and although I haven't had a chance really to look through it yet, I appreciate the funding was to enhance digital spaces, but I am really happy to see the hard copy available, because not everybody has access to the digital space in the first place. And so recognizing that there are a combination of needs in the community and giving people an opportunity to find print material is, I think, also critically important. So I appreciate the fact that you've covered both sides of that. I did have a couple of questions. Can you tell me, what is Granicus?
Oh, great question. Thank you, through Deputy Mayor Hall, through Mayor Ireland. Granicus is an engagement software, and it used to be called something called Baying the Table. That was what the old name was, but basically it's a platform, it's a software that strives to help local governments offer a diverse array of ways to engage with the public. So over the next two years with this new project, we're going to be utilizing Granicus. There's an annual subscription cost, which is what the grant is covering, and exploring those tools in more detail in collaboration with the the position that council approved through the 2023 budget. The project coordinator has a bit of enhanced engagement in their position description. And so between that person and the software that's going to be funded by this grant, our goal really is to increase the amount and the type of engagement we can do with our, with our community.
Well, thank you for that. So might I read into that then, that to the extent Granicus platform is useful within your department for this project, it might be something that could be made useful for engagement by the municipality general?
That would be the main purpose, is to increase the broad, big-picture municipal engagement. Yeah.
Excellent, thank you. And lastly, I see in your report that the web developer that you worked with is now using the custom calendar elsewhere. So did we nail down any proprietary rights to monetize this in some way?
I feel like maybe we should have. We worked extensively on the community calendar. I appreciate the comment and question. It was a lot of work to get that calendar fine tuned to the way it's working now. And yeah, the web developer has said this has turned into a really great product that we didn't have before, and they're kind of packaging it and pitching it to other municipalities now.
Well, perfect, another example of Jasper leading the way as that department has for a long time. And credit to now Counselor Laxer, the whole idea of drops in a bucket, and now we're putting drops in somebody else's. So that's great, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. I too want to express congratulations for this beautiful project. The Toolkit for Employers, I think, is really a good one. As an employer, I feel we take things for granted that newcomers don't, don't take, don't know about. I also had Granicus written down because I wasn't quite sure what it meant. And the what-to-wear part of the website's important too, and I find people just don't really know. I had the pleasure of being involved and learn to skate with newcomers before Christmas, and I just think the connection that you guys bring to this Canadian is wonderful. I just had a question just about the funding, so it started in 2022, and we have another two years, and it goes all the way to 2026.
Thanks for the question, Deputy Mayor Hall. It's the funding started March 28th, 2021, so technically really more like April 1st, 2021, March 31st of 2023 is the current grant. And then April 1st of 2023 to March 31st, 2025, they just run on a different year. Yeah.
Great, well, that's wonderful news. Thank you very much for your presentation. Any other questions from council? Counselor, will you take a motion to receive this project update for information? Counselor Laxer?
Hi.
Yeah, full moon, perfect. I will call the question, all in favor? Thank you very much, Ms. Dell, for all your hard work and your team. Moving on to agenda item seven point two, I'm just going to confirm our delegate tours are not here yet. The 2022 Annual Employee Housing Report. Looks like I may pass this over to Acting Director, Acting C A O. Great, happy.
Good morning, Your Worship and Council. This is Palchey's radio speaker's report.
Good morning, uh, your worship and council. Um, um, this is Belche's uh radio speaker's report. Uh, and she's on Zoom.
Good morning. Um, before you is the twenty twenty two annual employee housing report for your information. Um, in January of twenty twenty three, policy D one one six, the municipal employee housing policy was approved. Part of the administrative procedure is providing council with an annual employee housing report. This report provides details on the occupancy, revenue, and cost to operate staff accommodation. The municipality of Jasper recognizes the importance of providing housing to aid in staff recruitment and retention and aims to provide eligible employees with affordable and appropriate housing. Policy and procedure is in place to ensure rents are fair and equitable, reflecting Jasper market rental rates and that opportunities for occupancy reflect need. An annual employee housing report provides the opportunity to review costs related to providing staff accommodation and reassess need. In twenty twenty two, the municipal staff accommodation program sustained an operating loss of twelve thousand six hundred and twenty five dollars and eighty cents. And additionally, saw a capital investment of thirty eight thousand four hundred and fifty seven dollars and eleven cents toward the council-approved reinvestment in the property at twelve fifty one Cabin Creek Drive. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Belche. Are there any questions? Comments from council? Counselor Keller.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. Um, I have a question. I'm just curious about um A and B up on Home Street. So if I understand this right, we don't have anybody living on one side of the house, am I correct?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wall, through to Counselor Keller MP. Uh, that is correct. At this time, one half of the duplex is vacant. Um, we are currently assessing the cost to furnish that half of the duplex, and then um it would be available for renting.
And then my second question is, if I'm reading this right, did we lose twenty five thousand dollars on rent at Swift Crescent by not having that house full?
Thank you. Um, yes, there was vacancies over the course of the year. Um, so at this time, there is a loss there.
So at Swift Crescent, we normally have two to six people in the house. Is that correct?
In the summer, the demand is generally over six. Um, six is the maximum. And then in the slower seasons, we have less people in there.
And can I ask one more question? On this side that's vacant on the Bund Home Street, how many um rooms um to that accommodate?
Uh, bedrooms, there are three bedrooms and one in the basement, which is almost a separate suite.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Keller. I might just jump in quickly, ask a question following Counselor Keller's questioning. And three Swift Crescent, was it was it ever full with six people even in the summer in the summertime?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wall. Yes, it was. We actually had over demand.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Ireland?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Ms. Belche. I I really appreciate the report and I I have to say I struggle just trying to um interpret some of the information, but I'm really thankful that we have the information. You indicated in the request for decision um that we try to ensure that rents are fair and equitable, reflecting Jasper market rents. It looks to me, however, that um except for the congregant living at Swift Crescent, which is indicated at market rental, then we lose because it's not always full. I understand that. But the the rents are market rent. But the other rents are all at about eighty percent of market rent. And at eighty percent, um we lose money, which is, it's just interesting because it it puts some perspective on the challenges in this community um for landlords and businesses that have to rent property. I appreciate from the renters' perspective, um rents are often considered to be unaffordable. However, we appear as a landlord um at eighty percent of market rate to be losing money. So there are real challenges. Uh, and I, as I say, I I struggle to fully interpret interpret the information that you've provided to us, but I really do thank you for it. It's important that we get these reports annually so we can assess um both our position as a landlord or um our own staff. And so we can have a better picture of what other challenges are faced by members of our community who need accommodation for their staff as well. So again, thank you very much. And I will continue to ponder some of the information that you provided to us.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Questions from council? Thank you very much for your report, Ms. Belche. Welcome to council, Counselor Keller. Would you take a motion to receive this report?
I am making a motion that we receive the twenty twenty two annual employee housing report for information.
Thank you, Counselor Keller. I'll call the question. All in favor? And that report is received. Thank you again very much, Ms. Belche, for this report. Wonderful for us to be.
Thank you, Deputy Wall.
Good. Okay, moving on to new business item seven point three. Membership, membership with West Central Airshed Society. I'm going to look at acting C A O, Great Head.
Thank you very much, uh Deputy Mayor Hall. Um, in um the issue of air quality monitoring has been a concern for council. And on September fourteenth, twenty twenty one, council directed administration to apply for a purple air monitoring center um system through the West Central Airshed Society. It was quickly installed at the operations uh building. It has been active for more than a year. Um, on February seventh, two twenty twenty three, council directed administration to prepare a report on the benefits of joining the West Central Airshed Society. So some of the um the benefits of joining and and becoming a membership of the WCAS, the West Central Airshed Society. Um, it's fifteen hundred dollars a year, but it will be probated this year um due to the uh, it's a calendar year, they base their billing cycle off of. As a member, um, we'll support uh WCS, we'll support the municipality providing air data analysis for planning, awareness, outreach, and response to air quality issues. There's also, um, they're able to provide educational and awareness tools, anti-idling campaign tools and and initiatives such as that. Um, currently, there are two purple air monitors within Jasper and the WCAS is looking for an opportunities to provide continuous monitoring for that. Um, provides a forum to work with other stakeholders and neighboring municipalities on air quality issues. Um, and those, those are kind of the highlights on that. Um, and as it fits into our strategic planning, you know, it's this is more kind of um an advocacy and an awareness um uh piece or initiative. You know, so this does focus on prevention, mitigation, preparations for natural disaster. Uh, by having monitoring will be kind of given advanced notice a little bit if we um say there's uh wildfires to the rest uh to the west of us, the prevailing ones are bringing stuff along. And it's just a way of monitoring uh what the uh potential impacts could be. Um, and one other uh unique note, uh if you, when we're discussing the purple air monitors that we had previously installed, if you check your um weather app on your iPhone, um, there will be an air quality statement. You can actually tune in and see uh live time what a particular matter is uh right at the operations building where we have a purple air monitor installed. Uh, and that's pretty much all I have uh for this thing.
Thank you very much, our team CEO, Great Head. Questions from council? Counselor Waxer?
Not a question. Uh, thank you for that information. Um, I'm I'm really pleased that we're the recommendation is for us to be connected. And I'm ready whenever, when uh to make a motion when the time it after everyone has just had an opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Counselor Waxer. Mayor Ireland?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you to uh Mr. Great Head. Just have a couple of questions. I I'm struggling a bit still to understand how membership will help with planning. I I certainly see that awareness is covered um and response might be covered. How does monitoring assist us with planning?
Uh, this has been presented to me in the past as um said, there's um an item of concern such as a wildfire and the risk is getting higher and higher. Um, and we just kind of get a little bit as we know is that there is something heading our way. Um, and and being part of the West Central Airshed Society, um, they're able to further develop their maps and their predictive tools. Um, with more members that are participating, they were able to give a better overall um uh prediction and um I guess uh awareness of what's going on in a larger context. Um, unfortunately, that's the best I've got for that answer, sir.
That's fun. Thank you very much. I could see it connects. I might have labeled that more responsive than than planning, but I hear what you're saying. I appreciate that. The other question I had relates to um a suggestion by the executive director of the WCAS that they might invite a a member of well, a person from Jasper, representative of Jasper, they say to join their board of directors. Would you anticipate that that would be a staff person that would potentially fill that role? Or would that be potentially a member of council or a member of the public?
Uh, thank you, your worship. Um, previously, I uh worked quite closely um in another community uh with the West Central Airshed Society. Um, I think that's kind of inherent in my role um as director of operations, just to be aware of all these items and issues that are going on. Um, I need to make sure that I'm quite aware of all the environmental concerns and and emergency trends and stuff like that. Um, I I would see that would be somebody um housed uh within our staff, to our staff, to prepare somewhere in our staff, uh from our team. Uh, maybe who's somebody that might be best uh best suited to it or most interested in this. I don't expect it would take a large time commitment. Previously, uh meetings that are involved in were about an hour um and but an hour per three to four months at a time.
Again, thank you for that. And I I agree, um, from my perspective, a staff person would be best if we're going to have anyone at all on. If that can fit within your time constraints, that would be wonderful. Thank you. Those are my only questions.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Do you have questions or comments from council? So Waxer, did you make a motion?
Uh, that council recommend that, that maybe recommend that council direct administration to register the municipality of Jasper as a member of the West Central Airshed Society. And that um uh and and that they support a representative of the municipality of Jasper joining the WCAS Board of Directors.
Thank you, Counselor Waxer. Any debate on the motion? Mayor Ireland?
Might I suggest as a friendly amendment that we have, if invited to the end of that? So we, so we need an invitation.
Yes. Amendment. I was interpreting the uh recommendation as an invitation.
Administration, did you get that motion? I'll call the question. All in favor? And that motion is carried. Moving on to agenda item seven point four, traffic advisory committee terms of reference. I will look to Director Don for his changes.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. I sound very loud this morning. Um, so this was a an item on the motion action list, and we're returning to council. I believe the request came initially at organizational meeting this fall when council was considering uh appointments to boards and committees. And uh there is a bit of background with this file where we used to have a traffic advisory committee that was established by bylaw in which functioned for a number of years and uh was more formal in its reporting processes and as it was established as an as an advisory committee to council. Um, and we disbanded that committee. When I say we, I guess that's council, uh disbanded that committee in twenty nineteen. And the reason for it was that um the the decisions around the traffic control devices in the town site are largely the responsibility of the C A O through the bylaw. So that authority is delegated to the C A O. And in practice, uh the director of operations and utilities is largely responsible for making decisions on that front and then redirecting uh certain matters to the C A O or council, depending on which authority is uh the appropriate one for any specific decision. So for example, speed limits was one that council had to change. Um, and others um come and go depending what happens, but they're largely administrative. And um the committee, I think the thought at the time was that a committee that is mostly administrative in nature shouldn't really need to be constituted as a committee of council. And interestingly enough, we uh council was had the practice of appointing an elected official to that committee. Yet the bylaw at the time never provided for such a seat to be um designated to an elected official. So we discussed this internally, and uh this impacts my area in terms of the uh bylaw enforcement service, but also just general traffic in the community, of course, has an impact on first responders. So that is fire ambulance and R C M P. Uh, but as I mentioned earlier, uh, the operations department is largely in charge of making decisions on that front with support from the C A O. So what we are suggesting here is to formalize the traffic advisory committee again, but as an internal administrative committee. So this essentially happens already informally through discussions between the operations department and the protective and legislative services department. But we do recognize that having a formal terms of reference approved by the C A O and uh mandating the committee to meet at certain intervals would provide some benefits. And um therefore, that is our proposal. So you'll see that the recommendation in front of you is to receive the draft traffic advisory committee terms of reference for information and to direct administration to formalize the terms of reference through approval from the C A O. So um, we are suggesting that this should be an administrative process. And uh we are happy to hear any feedback or revisions you might want to provide to the terms of reference as alternatives or discontinue working on the item, which means uh those conversations would continue to happen informally and to um be implemented or or take place as needed. And uh that's it. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor, very much. Director Don to council. Questions or comments? Mayor Ireland?
Madam Chair, through you to Ms. Don. I thank you for bringing this forward. But I wonder whether it's necessary personally. It is an administrative matter and I'm not entirely clear what role council has to play. So for example, um, our C A O has instituted something called S L T. Um, seems to be functioning well. Didn't ask council to help. Didn't ask council to help. That established the C O and our administrative team have responsibilities, including traffic. And although I'm not suggesting that there shouldn't be an advisory committee with respect to traffic. I'm unclear exactly why it comes here. But since it is here, my comments on the draft terms of reference seems to me that it might be approved by a separate lead in section dealing only with purpose and not with responsibilities. For me, it's a little bit difficult to understand the purpose of the committee. The opening line says it's related to traffic safety, but it's more than safety. When you read through it, it's it's traffic fluid. It could be dealing other matters, might deal with parking, for example, which aren't safety issues. So a more general statement of purpose followed by a separate statement of responsibilities, I think, might enhance the read for people like me who just are interested only in the in the terms of records and won't be sitting on the committee. I say that with respect to that, that it's probably functioning informally right now anyway, without the terms of records. I just leave that for consideration.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Director Don?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Walther, Mayor Ireland. And in response to your first question, I believe Mr. Given gave you a similar answer on a different item last week. The reason it's here is because we have a motion from council that says to bring it back. So that that council direct administration to develop draft terms of reference for a traffic advisory committee and return to a future committee on the whole meeting. So that is, that was a motion arising from organizational meeting in the fall. And so rec- administration's recommendation supports your point of view. I believe that this is an administrative matter that the C O can deal with, but that is why we're here.
Thank you for refreshing my memory. And when I think back, there may have been a thought that what we can forward was terms of records that would engage council. And this is not the case. Thank you.
Do you have any Ireland? Any other comments or questions from council? Well, the absence of Director Don?
Having that said, thank you. You're not Deputy Mayor Wal. You're still councillor Wal. Thank you, councillor Wal. I believe in the optics of what Mayor Ireland presented, perhaps directing administration to discontinue working on this item might not be exactly what is intended here, but certainly to remove the item from the motion action list could be something that is dealt with later on. But there are ways to not necessarily the the motions that are presented here are administrative in nature and it would confirm council's direction that this is an administrative item, but there are a few different ways you could go about your motions here and not necessarily the ones that are recommended. So.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Then I don't have to struggle with
my name.
Oh, not Deputy Mayor or acting Deputy Mayor or alternate acting Deputy Mayor. I would make a motion that committee receive the draft traffic advisory committee terms of reference for information and that we need direct administration to formalize the establishment of a traffic advisory committee and that the motion. Sorry, number is there a motion number? But so a rephrase and that the traffic advisory committee draft terms of reference item be deleted from the motion action list.
Thank you for your motion. I just wanted to make sure administration got that. Any debate on the motion? I will call the question. All in favor? And that motion is carried. It is now ten twenty five. I might call a quick recess. I know we are still waiting on some delegations and we're absolutely flying through this meeting. I will call a quick ten minute recess. We will return at ten thirty five. Welcome back, everyone. We are moving on to well, the original seven point five was deleted until next council meeting next week. And we will replace that with a course request for the elected official education program. Of course, there is a land use and planning course being offered in April through four Zoom sessions starting on April fifth. Councillor Demota would like to attend as well as myself. I don't know any other council, councillor Waxer as well. And I I'm looking for a motion for that approval, I believe. Councillor Keller, ready?
I make a motion that committee recommends that councillor Demoto, Waxer and Hall can attend the courses that are by Zoom for the month of April.
Thank you very much for your motion, councillor Keller. There is motion on the table. I will call the question. All in favor? And that is carried. We are just going to keep on moving through our agenda until our delegate questions arrive. Moving on to agenda item number eight, motion action list. I'm going to want to speak to this list. Acting Director, the acting C O.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. On looking at the motion action list, I would say that we the item for the fruit trees on municipal property, we should defer again until May. We still need a bit more time and this is something that needs interagency partnership on this. So we need to get that together. I am not sure if there's any other adjustments to be made to the motion action list as I see it right now.
Mayor Ireland?
As I read it, there are a number that will have to be deferred fruit trees being one of them, but community conversations, town internet access was had a target date of this month and we haven't met that. The clean energy improvement program again had a target date of March of this year. That hasn't been met. And I raise again, as I said, I would the Jasper Community Housing Corporation governance. Again, that is set for for June. And if there is any opportunity to accelerate that, I appreciate we have consultants working on the business plan and they're going to come back to report, but if administration can try and broaden that process a bit and get it back earlier, that to me is a priority item as it ties into housing priority. And so the sooner we can get that the better. I don't want to suggest right now that we that we do move the target date from June earlier because I don't know whether that will unduly compromise the consultants, but if it can be brought forward earlier, that would be better. But the other, the other three I would move subject to some assistance from administration as to appropriate dates. I would recommend that we we redate community conversation, town internet access, the fruit trees on municipal property and the clean energy improvement and program all to later dates. I'm sorry, paid parking as well. On the third page, there was to be something presented this month that isn't here.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. See Director Don?
Thank you, councillor Hall. I was going to point out that paid parking also had a March twenty twenty three so that I think bumping to April for for those they are, those items are on administration's radar. Just we haven't had complete information to bring it forward. And Ms. Aabor just informed me that she has received information from Mr. Given that he is engaged. Mr. Given is working behind the scenes to get some some items advanced. I don't know that we can change dates so specifically for the J C H C item, I believe. But note taken that council would like to see that returned sooner than later if possible.
Thank you very much for that, Director Don. Other comments or questions from council? Councillor really take a motion to approve the motion action list as amended. Councillor Keller, happy. I will call the question. All in favor? What we, what? No, hands down, I didn't call a question.
Well, I I don't understand changes. I understand a motion to change, but I don't know what the change is because we haven't, apart from public parking, which Ms. Don said could come back in April. We need, I think, dates for the community conversation, town internet access, the fruit trees, the clean energy program. So if administration could just give us a hint as to what might be achievable, then we could put that into the motion.
Acting C O, Preha?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, I, yeah, I think that most of these are almost close to being finished and all the items from March, if we listen for April and both goes all forward. I believe that we're in a good place. And I, I do understand that there is quite a bit of work and everything is almost at the point of just being ready to launch and bring it forward to council.
Thank you very much for that. So that's fruit trees, parking, town internet and the clean energy energy program will be moved to April twenty twenty three for now. Okay, awesome. Administration has that. Great. Do I need to make a motion to approve the amendments and then amended? Okay. The council will need to make a motion. We'll go back to councillor Keller to approve the motion action list as amended. And I'll call the question. All in favor? And that is approved. Agenda item number nine, councillor upcoming meetings. Do councillor or mayor Ireland have anything to report from last week? Councillor Keller, ready?
I do not have anything to report from last week, but I do need to ask yourself, councillor Hall, our councillor, if one of you would stand in for me next week at the early childhood conversation, because I will be with you, councillor. I will let Mr. Del know that you will be attending instead of me.
Thank you very much for that. Councillor, the other items to report on, council appointments? Senior Ireland looking at his calendar.
I am. Thank you for that. Seeing what is upcoming. And all its business walk, I believe, is coming up next week, April fifth. That is something that is organized by community teachers, West Hill Head, and we have participated in that over the years. Not quite a meeting, though, I guess. And then otherwise I'll wait until after other upcoming meetings to report on that. Were you with them?
Thank you very much, Mayor Ireland. Other reports from council? And moving on to agenda item ten upcoming events. The Jasper Park Chamber Palmer's General Meeting is April twelfth. Breakfast meeting from seven thirty to nine thirty at the Forest Park Hotel. The Jasper Pride and Ski Festival will kick off April fourteenth and run until the twenty third. There is a recycling and waste reduction event that will be held in the Skylane River Lock State Lodge on April twenty seventh. Are there any other upcoming events? Councillor Keller, ready?
Just to Mayor Ireland's point, it'd be great to add the Jasper Business Walk there and Ms. Robbins' phone needs me to ask council if it'd be interesting to attending and if any members of administration would like to attend also. I've done several of them and I'm marching on the way next week too. But it's really great to blow out and meet with our businesses, hear how the winter was, what they're seeing for summer, what their challenges is. It just gives us better insight. So Ms. Robbins encourages council and members of administration to attend. At this date, nobody from Jasper yet has signed up to attend on the walk, so she would appreciate it. Anybody would let her know if they're coming.
Thank you, councillor Keller. Mayor Ireland?
Just a reminder for council, I believe that we have been invited Wednesday late afternoon to meet with the Board of Directors of Tourism Jasper. Yes. To my calendar for Wednesday, and I thought that was an invitation to council generally. And I thought, but I can't find it now that we have received an invitation to meet with Abby as well sometime soon. But I can't see that that is in my calendar, so to actually speak to it.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. I wonder if councillor Keller, who would like to reach out to Ms. Robbins, just to get another yeah, did you see an email or a doctor read?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. I can forward an invitation that was part of the last a part of the board members information. If I can forward that to all of council, so you do know about the community future information.
Thank you very much for that. There any other upcoming events? It's like tomorrow, Mayor Ireland or Tourism Jasper?
I will check with Tourism Jasper and confirm to council.
Thank you. So thank you very much for that. I am going to call another recess as we wait for our delegations to arrive. It is ten fifty and I believe they are set to be here for eleven A M. I'll call another ten minute recess. Welcome back. And I would like to welcome to the room Mark Story and Bernie Kreider from the West Hill Head Trail Society for a presentation.
Thank you very much for your patience. Thank you very much for your patience and understanding and other commitments this morning. So we're here to speak to you about the pathway to the park project, which is being undertaken by a group that was formed about a year and a half ago. And we're making some interesting progress and we think there's some impacts and opportunities for your communities. And that's why we're speaking to yourselves this morning and to Jasper National Park Management Team this afternoon. That one is perfect. This our main messages are that this is a bold initiative that provides many benefits to visitors, residents and businesses in the West Hill Head area. And that we have great partner support from folks in the region already, Wes Fraser and Wilbury Integrated have been hired to undertake the project management. Our board believes that this concept should be considered an opportunity within Jasper National Park. We will share what we will have learned as we do our section, which is from the town of Hinton to the park boundary. And what can be used possibly consider the development of this trail beyond that into the park. We are now at a stage where we've we're making our formal application for phase one, which is from Hinton to Wild Horse Kinky. As with the province, who is the primary landowner of the area that we're dealing with. So our vision as a as a committee is to create an accessible, unforgettable Canadian Northern Rockies Trail experience that feeds your soul. Only the views will leave you breathless with beckoning mountain vistas, pristine lakes, and royal forests. Your adventure is calling. So an experiential statement that is pretty important to tourism these days. And our mission then is to enable outdoor enthusiasts of all ages and abilities to experience Alberta's culture and wild nature on a unique paved, non-motorized trail from Hinton to Jasper National Park. Turn over to Mark.
Thank you. So this trail is going to be a scenic, multi-use trail. And it's going to be done in two phases. The town of we've been working the county of Yellhead, they've asked us to consider kind of a more phased approach as they're working through some things. And so we decided to move the first phase from the town of Hinton to Wild Horse Kinky Lake, from a recreation area, which is in itself a very beautiful location. And that's what the first phase will be. In terms of some of the specifics of the project, phase one of the the whole projects will be approximately thirty kilometers plus or minus to the park gate, and it starts right behind the Safeway there in Hinton. It'll be a mix of of trail, working along the over transportation right away, but also back up into the the forest for quite a stretch, providing great mountain vistas, some beautiful spots, and lots of opportunity for interpretation and, you know, how the people learn about the forest and how the forests are used, and so the history of the area and digitous uses and whatnot. The trail itself will be a three meter wide paved trail with a seven meter clear area to allow people to get off the side of the trail. I was actually quite involved in the development of the Legacy Trail in in Caninas, because I used to be the original director for Caninas, because so last ten years of my career. And so I saw the benefit and the impact that that trail, the Lakeshale Trail, had for the communities of Canmore and Benham and feel that this is a really amazing opportunity to to do something like this in this area. And this trail will accommodate joggers, runners, skateboarder, skate roller skiing, that kind of stuff. And obviously, it'll be with the Advent B bikes, so B bikes that are on the trail. It's really meant to be a trail that's good for all ages, all abilities, and all kinds of kinds of non-motorized use. That will have several stops along the way, parking lots, picnic tables, and viewpoints to make it so people can use the trail at their as they like to see fit. What I've seen on these trails is people will self-select sections of trail that they like to like to ride based on their skill level. Some people ride the whole thing. Some people ride a five kilometer, ten kilometer stretch for families. The phase one portion that goes to Wild Horse Kinky Lake will be about twenty two kilometers. And when in the design of this, this this trail, we looked at things like line of sight, trying to avoid creek crossing, river crosses as much as possible. We moved the the trail around some area that we have no know that there's indigenous use in that area, try to stay with that. And we looked at lines of sight, and we actually worked with the grazing lease owners in the area and actually largely redesigned the trail to avoid their reasons leases as much as possible. We've been working with stakeholders in this beginning to help select the initial route that we're submitting to government. And the the alignment is also really intended to be sustainable over time, so that it uses existing clearings and distinct right of ways to help mitigate the amount of new cut area that this this trail would use, so it means except for roads and areas and old trails, much as possible. There's a a map of the trail of this show is phase one, going into to Wild Horse Kinky Lake, which is part. We see there's a lot of interpretive opportunities with this this project. So we're going to be looking at how do we interpret and talk to the users about things like mixed mixed use and integrated use landscapes, so fire smart landscape fire on 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 how we mitigate for that, indigenous opportunities, wildlife management, those six things. We're going to try to incorporate a bunch of messages along the on the trail to help people earn what the forest and this area and this history. Yeah, so it's going to be a, you know, probably that really we try to use one part of our design in this as additional thing to try to avoid species at risk and try to manage those issues as much as possible with the trial trail development.
So we've set up a strategic plan and got five key pieces of this work that's been done, and one is obviously the trail planning, design, and construction. The others are communications and marketing, slightly different because the marketing will yield the encouragement of use. Sourcing, fundraising, and any kind of recruitment, and then transition and sustainability, which is in fact also why we're here before you, because transition for us is in part making sure that the trail is owned and operated and maintained that we built, but then also the opportunities to extend it in other directions further. Successes to date, we've raised over two hundred thousand dollars for the planning stage. We in a sixty day blitz sold one hundred and fifty pound memberships in the Hinton area. We finalized the trail alignment that's suitable to most parties now, despite the fact we had some rocky starts when we drew the line across people's leases in ways that we couldn't accomplish, obviously. Relationships have been built with the right of way companies and the trail area as well as with Wes Fraser, the FMA holder, and we've had great support from the town of Hinton. We're still working through some things with the Yellhead County. We've hired a project management company, and we have both a Facebook and website presence, which is going to ramp up very shortly now that we've got our application ready with an alignment that we can actually start talking actively to finalize centerline alignment for the entire section of phase one. The challenges remain that we have not yet sorted out operations and maintenance roles for municipalities, and that we have still some some crazy lease resistance because we would be beside them rather than through them. And folks still are anxious about those matters. And we've been working with the provincial agencies. Some are very responsive and others are not to get back to us with issues that as we coordinate those things. Our next steps, we've got our professional survey completed, and it's going to now be processed through the government systems. We hope to get decisions before this year end. We've established our fund development committee, and we plan to push hard to finalize ownership, operation, and maintenance responsibilities this year. And then have components of phase one ready to proceed, including a full cost estimate update. This trail, using the past experience of three other trails, we estimate is going to cost in the order of ten million dollars.
So just sort of for this year, kind of going forward for this this year, at this point, where our project manager is actually in the process of working with the Albert Avenue Consultation Office, brought self-averaged determine average consultation requirements for the for the trail. That's kind of one of the first things we do. Meanwhile, we're going to be reaching out to certain indigenous communities to see if there's opportunities for collaboration, partnership on interpretation, those types of things. So that'll be done outside of the formal consultation process. We're working with, there's a number of companies there. We have to get right away, right away through both crossings and a few, we're just going to work through that stuff. We're we met with the Philos Research Institute to talk to them about opportunities for them helping us on interpretive development, interpretive signage and sharing wildlife interpretation, all this their design. And they seem quite open to that. They have a lot of knowledge and experience and background in this area with research and whatnot. And sort of out of all these things, we're going to be developing communications plan to try to, you know, further communicate what's going on, but also to look for opportunities for overtime volunteers and that kind of stuff. So it's it's kind of starting small from a planning perspective, but that has moved down through and now that we have a road type, we're in a better place to talk about the other parts of the plan and this. You know, in terms of the project benefits, there's a lot of benefits we see this project. There's huge benefits from the fitness and home perspective, the mental wellness piece of this are pretty obvious. There's lots of collaborative opportunities between tourism and the economy and the communities and that kind of stuff here. This project in our, from what I can see, really different strategic plans and different organizations that this this really fits with the province's objectives of increasing tourism in in the area, in the province, particularly in in the Jasper Hinton area. That's one of the sort of areas that they're focusing on. Tourism is focusing on. It also fits well with county tourism, development opportunities, and their trail plans, whatnot. But I think this fits with a lot of objectives that are going on in the province right now. I think this trail will be very safe. My experience with the Legacy Trail, there's a lot of ground building did in the year that use that trail, and then very, very few issues that arise from the safety perspective on the trail. So I believe this is a good safe opportunity. When we try to sit, design that into the trail, things like line of sight and, you know, a lot of that kind of stuff. I think from a community inclusive this perspective, I think there's tremendous opportunity to get the community involved in developing the trail and making the trail kind of volunteer and helping out with the trail. And it's a sustainable, you know, opportunity that we've been doing for years. And it actually could be a bit of a draw for other kind of tourism opportunities in the future. Also, we see the education perspective, this has been huge in this in this trail, and so we're quite excited about that.
So this is closed, then this trail is an opportunity for Jasper to consider evolving the trail further within the park from the east boundary to the municipality of Jasper. Thank you. We're open for your questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Crider, Mr. Story, for your presentation. The idea of a trail from Jasper Hinton, I love. Are there any comments or questions from council? Go ahead, this Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Counselor Hall. Thank you both gentlemen for the presentation. I commend you a brilliant visionary goal, really exciting, and the thought that there could be that sort of access between our communities is is really to me, quite a progressive step and could really impact both the communities, but the visitors to the community. So I really appreciate that you're bringing this forward. I did understand earlier that you're meeting later today with Parks Canada, which of course will be critical. There's there is no role that that municipal council has in the use of those lands outside of of the town, so that will be critical. But I wonder whether you have plans to engage with, say, Tourism Jasper or other groups in the community. Yeah, we've already talked to their executive directors, both Patty and James and Heather. Three organizations, I believe. And shared some of the information with them, and I think that's the way we presented it. Mostly, we've been leaving it as an opportunity and leaving it for you to perpetulate as a community rather than suggesting we should drive something. Our Trail Society was formed primarily to get this built and possibly will dissolve after that. But we will certainly want to pass our earnings on to others who might want to do further. There's an interesting parallel in the Vancouver Island, the trail from Pino to Euclid was done in three sections as well. The two communities built a piece that cut people from their their communities to the edges of the park and eventually, or and again, I'm not even clear which border it happened. The National Parks actually built a wonderful trail that goes right through the Long Beach National Park, so that they now have a thirty plus kilometer access trail. Ours is slightly different than some that you've seen because it's less, it's not just access, but it's also at least in the section you were planning, working through going through some pretty interesting natural terrain. We're not trying to follow in parallel the highway quite as aggressively as some other trails have. Well, thank you for all that. It reminds me that a few years ago, there was at least a federal budgetary proposal to build a trail from the Icefields to Jasper, similar to the Legacy Trail. And that got halted, but I understand that the budget money went instead to Pacific Rim National Park, and they managed to build a trail through the national park there. Jasper didn't get that opportunity. Mr. Story, I I congratulate you. I wasn't aware that you had been involved, particularly at that level with the Legacy Trail, but what a legacy that is. And when I do drive by there, which I do often, that trail is always really heavily used. It's a great credit to both communities. I wondered whether you can tell us how that is maintained? Is there a portion? Well, it starts in Canmore, but then I presume it goes on provincial land to the park and then federal land into Benham. And so how is that now maintained?
Yes, that was that is maintained by the individual owner, I guess, collective owners of that particular piece of trail. So the first this piece of the town, the town of Canmore maintains that themselves, and then the piece that goes to the provincial park, and so province maintained that. There is a small piece of county and the big one, and they were they weren't opposed to the project, but they didn't really want to contribute to it. So the province parks, we have we offered to maintain that piece, because that wasn't a very big piece. Then Parks Canada maintains the piece that runs from the park gate into the town that basically. So each 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 organization or, you know, maintains that portion of the trail that runs through their land. So so obviously, Park Canada has its piece of maintenance on that trail, you know, overall, because the majority of the trail runs through Benham.
But I appreciate that your proposal right now is phase one and phase two, which is all outside of the national park, but a precedent has been set for a trail in the national park that is paid and maintained by Parks Canada, and that's that's great to know that that precedent exists. So I wish you very well this afternoon in your your later presentation, and I am happy to do what I can do personally. I'll wait for council position with respect to council's position on this, but I personally encourage you and wish you every success.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Kelsey Waxer.
I too would like to express my enthusiasm for this project, and I have the opportunity to utilize a similar trail in Prince Edward Island, the Confederation Trail, and wherever you go in Prince Edward Island, you see multi, many, many people, families, older people, that everyone uses the trail extensively. I think it's a wonderful idea. Thank you.
Counselor Keller.
Thank you, Counselor Hall. I also like to express my thanks to you. I think it's exciting for the Alberta Northern Rockies. I think it would be great for the region, for Yellhead County, Hinton, and eventually, if Jasper National Park allows this, I think it's very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kelsey Keller. I think it's a wonderful idea. As an avid cyclist and trail user, I tell you, it would be used. My husband has bike to Hinton a few times, and the park is beautiful, and then it gets a little scary. My question is, as far as it's as accessible to all, is it a fairly low grade?
Yes, we tried to design it as much as possible, grade below six or seven percent. There's a couple of stretches where it'll be a little steeper just because of terrain we can't get around, but it'll be short stretches. So you know, some people may have to get pushed for a little bit, but that sort of that even happens on Legacy Trail. There's a little hill that you got to go up that some people make it up, some people don't. So we tried as much as possible to minimize the, you know, the steeper stuff. So it's it'll be pretty good for the park for people, right?
Thank you very much for the presentation. Any other comments from council? I'm just looking for a motion to receive this presentation for information. Counselor Waxer, there is a motion on the table. All in favor? That is Carrie. Thank you very much for coming today, and thank you for your time and this great presentation. Okay, we are at item number eleven on our agenda. Germaine, you can give a motion to I mean, we did everything, didn't we?
We did, but do I just have a moment?
Yes. Yes.
Before you gentlemen leave. I would like to do a little bit more and receive your presentation for information. But I am struggling with how I might word a further motion. And it might be that committee recommend council seek opportunities to advocate on behalf of the extension of the pathway from the park boundary to the municipality of Jasper. I, I would like to show support, recognizing that we can do it, but and we, we are sitting as a committee, so we can't make full decisions. But I'd like to put a recommendation forward to council for consideration that we find opportunities to advocate on, on your behalf for the extension of the pathway from the park boundary to the municipality.
Thank you, that Mayor Ireland. I heard committee recommend council seek opportunities to advocate on behalf of the extension from the park boundary to the municipality of Jasper. Administration, makes sense? I will call the question on that motion. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you again, gentlemen. Best of luck.
We'll circle back to item number 11 on this agenda, which is adjournment. We would like to make that motion. Councillor Keller, ready? I will call the question all in favor. Thank you very much. Administration, council, and members of the public who's in today and our delegations have a wonderful rest for Tuesday.